...mementos might or are being sold? And the shack could be the first of more to come. For instance, an ice cream stand, a smoothie drinks, or construction. The claim is made that there's a movable structure. It is? Was it moved during the recent high water flood? What are the plans when movement is necessary? For instance, electrical disconnects and any other utility disconnections. The simply claiming that it is movable without documentation remove the requirements for an elevated structure, especially for a new structure? Three, rendering, especially for the pavilion, shouldn't they be provided? Should they be provided as the Director of Planning Martha suggested? And please be clear, if side flaps are anticipated during rain events, they would hinder sightlines and I would pose them. And four, storage shed. I appreciate the need for the storage, but it would seem to be a permanent structure and should be raised off the ground. Rendering needed.
Michelle, Jack, Marla, give us any comments or need to think through this a little bit?
We talked about capacity, just because it was on the website. They agreed that it was 157.
And they may agree that was a select board issue, cavity issue.
All right, so let's take them one by one. Capacity. Do you guys have a posted capacity somewhere?
The seating capacity.
And it's a sign on a building that says capacity?
Yeah, it's created by the select board and it's determined by the fire department.
And Peter, Peter just went out and did the annual inspections and they left that downstairs.
Okay, so for Steve, it's a good question and he is questioning why you guys are advertising for 300 people if you have 150 people as the capacity. And if the capacity is for seating and the seating is per assembly and per the fire department's understanding of how many people are congregating and how many people can exit said structure or place. I guess that is the clarification and that is a seating capacity of 157 people.
It's actually a little bit more than that, but I mean not much more for the seating capacity.
The building inspector is the authority. If somebody had a complaint, they would call us, they would call the building inspector, they would call the fire department, might call the police. But it's really, the fire marshal has jurisdiction and the building inspector has jurisdiction. So I think for us, the use and understanding that the shed does not, although it covers more space, you did answer and you did say that you had run this by the fire department. And if you were to enclose the sides of the pavilion, that it would make it a different structure in their eyes and it would then be a different occupancy for that check. The fact that you're covering the ground with outside, without sides, the enclosures means that they see it as the same area and the same amount of people per square foot as if there was no pavilion and people were standing on the sand or where they were standing under the pavilion on sand. So I think we hear that and per our discussion, I also think we talked about that you weren't increasing parking, you weren't increasing the enclosure. If people are parking where they're not supposed to, then that's the town police that should enforce that. But you have a certain parking limitation for the physical area and you have people that could park at houses and walk. So none of that has changed in terms of what we originally had viewed. So I don't think we see an increased capacity and certainly don't see a increased capacity with just the pavilion. An enclosed pavilion would be a whole different panel. That answers three too. So the second, the merchandised shack, the shack's not a restaurant. Accessory structures are allowed, you are allowed accessory structures to a residence. There are accessory structures that support the use. If they support the use, you know, if it was totally different, you're in a restaurant, a restaurant can sell some marketing merchandise, you can sell some food. I think if you were, I don't know, if the intent of people showing up to buy something from the merchandise shack that had, that were then not partaking in the site, that would be the different use. Am I making sense or can you follow that? I mean if you were catering totally to beach use and people were showing up to buy stuff in the merchandise shack only to use the merchandise shack to get to the beach, you know, you have a building down the road that sells that kind of stuff. So that's not the use, it's of the sunset club.
Correct.
Am I making sense? So if it is and remains an accessory structure that supports the use, then the shack is, you know, I think appropriate. If you keep adding more shacks, that would be a change of the plan and you were supposed to come back or you would be called out on it and that is not acceptable to add more. The fact that the shack is deemed to be movable, the shack does not meet the flooding, you're going to pass or ask the planning board in their site plan review, which is a subject that they would cover to review and determine and if they find issue, you'll discuss it with them. Chad? Chad, everybody?
Yeah. Whether it's movable, whether the recent high tide flooding again is site plan review, civil review, COMCOM review, however they propose to run and review the site. All right, rendering, especially for the pavilion, shouldn't they be provided as the Director of Planning Martha suggested? And please clarify if side flaps are anticipated during rain events. So we did talk about the side flaps previously and an enclosed structure that could possibly trap people is seen much differently by the code and by the fire marshal. And you're not asking for that, so you're not going to have them. So that's the side flap issue. Signage is something that we really didn't talk about. It was brought up, maybe we didn't spend a lot of time on it, but there is a section of the bylaws that govern signage. Signage is per the purview of building inspector. If you submit to the building inspector and he says that's too big because it doesn't meet our bylaw, then you end up here, but it goes through him first. I think it would be helpful, and again, as I had said before, you have the responsibility of having a very prominent site in Newbury. As people approach Plum Island, there is a lot of intangibles and importance to that site as people come over and see the beach and see the first essence of arriving onto Plum Island. Whether you feel that way or not, it is a physical character of the site and anything you put on the site. And being architects and people that deal with zoning, I think we have a passion about that because a lot of times we design stuff and nobody pays much attention to it, but buildings in certain positions and locations can add a lot to the overall atmosphere. And I think you would agree and everyone would agree that the nicer the atmosphere and the presentation of the arrival and promo suits residents as much as the commercial, as much as the visitors and serves Newbury well.
Absolutely.
So you are stewards of a site that has an importance and so the effort to understand the pavilion and the positioning of it and whether it's this way or that way, where signage might be or not be and whether you're over merchandising or not and the essence of what it looks like is important to a lot of people for a lot of different reasons, but at the end, we're all Newbury people and we all get great value out of it. So I think it would be, it would be good if you, when you go to site planning review, that maybe you had a photo at least from the bridge or even a video if someone's, can sit in the car and take the video as you're driving over the bridge and see the site so that they can understand the positioning of the pavilion would only be an interest and benefit to you guys. If somebody could take that and just quickly dub in the rotated pavilion with the gable end facing the people as they come over the bridge, it would then be understood that it's not as big as it was previously. You're not looking at the broadside of the roof, but you're looking at the gabled end and the slope allows you to see beyond. And as you come over, you get the Plum Island Grill with their billboard and you get your pavilion as the gateway to Plum Island. So I do think rotating adds a lot to that presence of minimizing the pavilion and giving somebody a recognizable structure or shape that they can see that balances out the Plum Island Grill and the signage that they have moving down the road. And site plan review is going to consider where the pavilion is located and sightlines and traffic and the people turning the corner from two directions and where pedestrians move. So if you could provide some of that, video or some photos, I think that would be helpful for that. If, in one of our conditions, if site plan review from the planning board comes up with proposed modifications, if the modifications are, I'm just going to say different from the plan that we reviewed and approved, you're going to have to circle back through us. You're already on our way of crafting a favorable decision with conditions and one of the conditions is you go through them and then you go back through us. So I can't speak for them, but there is a process in place. We also ask you to go back to the select board and let them know what you are up to in order to make sure that they understood in providing you a license what you were doing since that was different than what was provided in the application for renewal. And they may have comment and feedback from residents about events and things that we don't, we don't have purview or comment on, but we have concerns of as a whole an understanding to use. So that's renderings, that's where the renderings would be seen or views would be seen to understand where the pavilion goes. We talked about site flaps and the storage shed. Again, the putting a temporary shed and permanent structure will let the site planning board review with their civil review as to, as to the determination of the temporary storage sheds sitting on the ground or if there's another means that is needed because of site conditions. So I think these are all great questions by Steve. I think we reviewed them, but they require additional discussion that we're having right now. Does anybody on the board have anything to add or comment on or needs further clarification of in terms of the questions that we're providing here?
Tore them all.
All right, so with that, let's review the decision. I think the opening, the submitted materials, up to three findings and determination. Do you guys have a copy of this by chance?
Yeah.
So on A, Chrissy, on three findings and determination, number one, general facts, general findings of the facts, you have question mark after 94, Daf7, D4.
So in the book, there's more to it and I think Peter's just missing a letter. So I was looking at that section. Four, it should be A or B. So section 97, four, D, four.
There's A, B, C, or D.
And there's A, B, C, or D.
D.
So he's missing a letter.
D.
It is D.
Uh, it's not A.
No, it's got to be D, the second four should be D.
Yeah.
Change of use, alteration of a nonconforming structure to provide for substantially different purpose.
Well, they're not, they're not.
They're changing use though.
No.
But that's the question we're determining.
Yeah.
So D, part two, alteration of a nonconforming structure to provide for substantially different purpose or for the same purpose, same use in a substantially different manner. You have the same use, it's just that it's being covered, so the manner in which it's being used is different. It's the same use, it's just being done differently.
Correct, and if you're arguing about the merch shed, shall we say, that could be alteration to provide for a substantially different purpose because the merchandise, as the guy, Mr. Manion, himself, merchandise wasn't part of the original one. So I think it covers both.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a gray zone because we're coming back to something and we're making sure it meets the original intent as opposed to hearing this for the first time where it was the same use, it was a use that was being changed to be change of pre-existing nonconforming use to another less detrimental nonconforming use was, was the part previously, right, going from a gas station of cars and gas to.
Restaurant.
Restaurant club. So that should be D.
Okay.
So then on E.
Is that all just one lot? I looked on the assessor's property card, it says condo use.
It's two that were combined.
Okay, so it is one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the, do you still have the two address numbers or is it?
We go by four for the mailing address, but I think on the property assessor's map, it's two through A.
Yes.
All right, so it's one parcel that has, and for your application, the approximate, I believe, one acre, a little over one acre?
Yes.
I couldn't get Mass Network to work for me tonight, so I don't know if that is in zone AE yet, but nothing firm yet.
So isn't the zone and part of those in the original decision?
That's true, I will check that, it's on my desk, thank you Erin. And I don't know under I if I had the right, I read it on the form, but the side B setback is zero. I wasn't sure about that.
Um, doesn't sound quite right.
Under F, it also says the current use of the restaurant accessory use as well as the single family dwelling?
There is, there is a.
That's on the question, that's still on that property?
The single family dwelling, I believe, was carved off as separate.
Oh, okay.
It was carved off?
It was, we had Goddard Duck's file and I'm not, I can't say for certain, but I'm pretty sure that's already happened.
Jason, is this it?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to speak here or there. I would think the site is too small, but you had made accommodations to move it and reposition it so that it became conforming for its size and you could move it off the property line.
Correct. That was in the original decision as well.
For our application, it hasn't changed.
Is the side B setback, is that on the Plum Island Boulevard side? Because that's definitely not zero.
I think they used the other street as the frontage, the side street as the frontage you guys mentioned.
Yeah.
So that would be.
But the application does say proposed 20, 10, zero, 10 and a half.
Yeah. It's got to be, I think it should be 20.
Chrissy, do you have a plan there?
I do.
The site plan?
Yeah, there's a little bit. Street setback is 20 feet, rear setback is 10.5 feet. Yeah, north side, south side, none, so that's a zero.
Yeah.
Are you, yourself curious about that?
I'm reading that one, yeah.
Yeah, maybe that's referring to McLeod Ave. There's no setback, there's a fence right on the property line on the McLeod Ave side of it.
But we don't, we're looking to dimension buildings, not the parking lot or the fence. So I see right here it says 20.
Yeah, that's, that's straight, yep.
It says 14 at this corner, it's 10, 14, 20.
Is that what was moved, this existing building?
That's what is carved out to be moved in the future.
But you do have a.
Let's see.
You have this one.
Oh, yeah.
In order to, for this picture, our science probably have.
Yeah, I think I took that out tonight.
All right, so in the survey or civil, you're filling this out, you took the existing building that's on the property line, calls it zero.
He calls it zero.
Even though for the purposes of us today, that hasn't been recorded yet.
We don't know that it's happening if it's not presented, we're off of this plan, so.
Yeah, so we have to assume it's still there and going to stay there.
So it's 20, 10, zero, but one of the lines isn't right because the, I guess this is 10 feet then. Here. Where'd you find that one? Is that an I?
What's the setback?
All right, so the front setback decreases slightly from 21 to 20, that's correct, but remains conforming. The rear setback remains the same at 10.5, that's here. The side setback A decreases significantly but remains conforming, decreasing from 61 to 10.
Which is the pavilion now.
Yes, which is the pavilion, decreasing from 61 to 10. And the side setback B remains the same at zero, which is at the opposite side or the north side, remains at zero.
Which is correct.
So. Under I, Chrissy? At the last part of the sentence and it said add, and side B setback remains the same at zero?
Yes.
That is correct. And if we could add side B setback and then in parentheses put north, so we can all remember that B is the north side.
Okay.
Remains the same at zero.
Okay.
And then someone can figure it out without having to.
Go through it all then.
Do what we just did.
Excellent. I'm writing that on the application sheet.
Don't you want to move that propane tank, Craig? Even when you're driving that, don't you want to move that?
Which one's?
Your propane tank in the middle of the driveway.
We did a lot of brainstorming, best place to put it and that.
Yeah, it's tough, it's a tough stuff. It's a tough parking.
So J.
J, we discussed, so I'll change that A to D. And add the lingo under D. Alteration of a nonconforming structure.
Yep.
Under C, four and five, I just, that was just fluff.
Spoiler plate stuff.
Yeah.
Wouldn't C be a good place to put, turn it 90 degrees?
I think under the conditions.
Is that a?
No, I think I need to add under the conditions.
Here or. This is really stating, C is really stating what the applicant has argued or stated as the favorable part of their argument. And a condition, because we changed what was originally presented, really should go under the conditions. Perfect, so you can think of number eight, we can get to that. So in that paragraph four, decision, six line down, the zoning board further finds that a special permit may be granted for the proposed project as shown with conditions on the above mentioned plans. Now we can get to a condition that states that. Without substantial detriment to public good, really without nullifying, degradating bylaws, terms and conditions that are below. Without substantial detriment to public good, released without nullifying, degradating bylaws, terms and conditions as below.
So under two, I added the lingo of two years instead of one after talking to Martha about that. I don't know if we concluded during that discussion, but the length of the decision Martha mentioned should be at least two years. Planning board permits, special permits are for three... are for two, I'm sorry, and conservation orders and conditions are for three years. So she suggested changing that moving forward and discussing it with the board.
Yeah, I have that somewhere in my notes. And that does... And what we came to conclude is that under 97-4, 5, E, number... Under part five, "Such structure shall be rebuilt not more than two years after the demolition or catastrophe. Such period may be extended for one year for good cause shown upon the written request." So if there was a mistake for Tyco B, you know, we're... It's the same thing. We're applying a statute of time that is consistent with what we would do if somebody else was tearing down or if somehow their structure got... had a catastrophe that they would... They should act with at the same time period.
It's confusing because it did have catastrophe with fire, but it doesn't count, so understood.
And then section F, which talks about rebuilding after finding, has that exact same clause under it. So the... As of right and rebuilding after finding both had the same periods. And so as we're trying to make sure that time doesn't pass, people get different... Different things happen. Something changes around you that because we're all about the neighborhood and how your use is... And now all of Plum Island is weighed against the existing Plum Island because of the non-conformities that exist that should time pass. And also, nobody wants to get approval for something and have something sort of have to sit there. You're active. It's not quite the same thing. But people start a project and then people are looking at a basement or a foundation for two years with no action, then someone needs to step in and say, you gotta do something or we're gonna make you do something. So that's where the time... We're not trying to... Just trying to keep control so that light doesn't happen and there's an action that can happen if something happened like that.
Ideally, wrap it up in the spring.
No, I know, but I'm just trying to overly explain what... Why we have it in here. So the permits shall... The special permit shall lapse if not exercised within two years. Three is straightforward.
Four, we never discussed the requirement for the structure to go up on a platform. I don't know where I got that one from.
Which one?
Under four, for the two-foot requirement, the platform for the shed, storage shed to go up on. That wasn't discussed by us. That was something that I guess is gonna be discussed by planning board.
The applicant shall be with the planning board and the conservation commission to have a discussion on the proposed...
Change of use, period.
On the...
And they don't do change of use, right?
No, it's not.
Oh, that's right, okay.
On the proposed...
Site plan?
Changes to the site plan. Changes to the site plan for the proposed storage, container placement and new pavilion. All right, get that?
Yes, thank you.
And that doesn't explicitly cover the merchandise shed because we're saying that's already there and we don't have to deal with that?
We're saying that the merchandise shed is an accessory use and people coming to use the merchandise shed are coming to use Sunset Club and are coming to use the restaurant.
Accessory use, kind of.
If the merchandise shed was to promote something that doesn't happen on site, then it would not be an accessory use. It would be a single use and therefore would not be allowed.
Ice cream store.
Ice cream store.
Well, if you had the ice cream on site, mother, you're making this complicated.
No ice cream on the lot.
So should we add one instead of five? Add one about the condition of rotation of the pavilion to a preferable...
Yeah, which is in the revised site plan with the pavilion located... So the applicant shall submit af... After... After planning board review.
What the changes pavilion?
A revised site plan with the pavilion. And here's where we can say where the pavilion rotated so that...
So that the ridge pole where gable ends face east-west instead of north-south?
So that the gable ends face east-west. Plan with the pavilion rotated so the gable ends face east-west. Period. And then I would make... I would make six. The applicant shall present the select board with the updated site plan.
Did you say before I did, we'll submit a revised site plan?
Yeah, the applicant will submit after planning board review, a revised site plan with the pavilion rotated so that the gable end faces east-west. Six, the applicant will present to the select board for discussion of their intentions of the revised site plan. As it modifies the... Is it an entertainment license? Is that what the select board grants you?
Yes.
Is that what it's called?
They do the common vic license, which is the basically the alcohol license and the entertainment license.
All right, common vic... Whatever it's called.
Exactly.
Particular license. Can I reread that again or do you have...
Please, just one more time, thank you.
The applicant will submit, comma, after site... After planning board review, comma, a revised site plan with the pavilion rotated so that the gable ends face east to west, east and west.
Okay.
Six.
Yes.
The applicant will submit to the select board for discussion of their intentions of the revised site plan as it modifies the common particular license.
Okay, got it.
That present, inform. I think the action is, is that we... Whether you... Yeah, I think you just need to go... I'm just trying to think who informs the select board that you're gonna get before them so you can get on their agenda so that you can quickly, they can say, oh, the Sunset Club's here. You can stand up and say, yes, we're here. We'd like to inform you that we're adding a pavilion. We've been before the select board. We've been before the planning board and we're here before you because this is a change to the site and you guys gave us a particular license. And our submission did not include this, and so we're just keeping you up to date. And here's what we're doing. Now they know, because what we... We just want to make sure that everybody that has an interest and if people should complain, they're gonna complain to the select board. Select board gets a complaint and then all of a sudden they're like, what? Pavilion? What happened? And so now they're in the know.
Could that be like a letter or email or something to give them a heads up?
Yeah, that's why I was changing it from present to or shall inform the select board. So if you inform the select board, you send them a letter, you send them the new site plan, and Chrissy can even forward that on your behalf to get it on the docket so the select board can at least say, yes, we've been informed. That's what I'm after. Now, now they're in the know. Now if somebody comes up to them and starts talking to them and says, I got issues on Plum Island, and they can't act like they don't know what's going on.
Can I ask about number four?
Yep.
If it was never part of our previous discussions at the previous two meetings and it's under the purview basically of conservation and the planning board, what's the purpose of it being a line item in the conditions?
Because there's a possibility that they'll change or could change or could affect the change on the plans. Typically, somebody comes in with a straightforward application. Everything is like a slam dunk. You get your decision, your decision and the plans get stamped and get submitted for record with the deed. So we want to make sure that the plan, that is, that is the... What your narrative, this decision and these big drawings govern what you're gonna do. If somebody 10 years from now goes back on the record and says, I don't think they were able to do that. They go back to your deed and it's recorded on your deed and this special permit finding is there and the decision and the plan are there. We want to make sure that the plan, at the end of the day, represents exactly what you're doing. If we record this plan and the pavilion isn't rotated and it's recorded and there's notes about, oh, well, this is gonna happen and that's gonna happen and this is gonna happen. And somebody, you go to sell the property and someone pulls up that deed and says, well, there's something fishy here because your pavilion isn't rotated and it says it's rotated on the site. What happened here? We're just trying to get all the ducks in a row.
Oh, absolutely. I'm specifically pointing to number four, the two-foot requirement. It was never part of our previous discussions.
We dropped that out.
Oh, you did. That's what I was asking. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
The applicant will meet with the planning board and conservation commission to have a discussion on the proposed changes to the site plan for the purposes of storage, container placement and the new pavilion.
Sorry, I wasn't clear. Thank you.
They can put it back.
Yeah, they will.
For sure.
They will govern the civil, they will govern site plan and land positioning, site lines and everything they normally do, which is all spelled out in the planning board.
Right.
And that's what we'll do. So what we... What we're saying is that they will... The planning board and conservation commission will review storage, container placement and the new pavilion, period.
Perfect.
That was...
Thank you.
We crossed that off. Okay, so six becomes seven, seven becomes eight in the number scheme. Any modifications to the pavilion other than those approved by the zoning board of appeals or the town of Newbury by and through the building department and/or the conservation commission or the planning board shall require modification to this special permit? Somebody, somewhere, if something changes on the site plan, you would come back. If they're asking to make a change and you get to that point, by the time you get to us, it's a formality to just make sure that we receive it so we can say that again, we understand what's going on at the end of the conclusion of all the reviews. A, this typical appeal should be made pursuant to blah, blah, blah.
I wasn't drawing exhibits, so I just threw some submitted things there.
For conditions, did we want to mention, maybe this is COMCOM or planning board, but we talked about that the surface is sand underneath the pavilion and that we talked about like no flaps, that it's, you know, open, all the sides are open?
The no flaps is covered.
And then was that a condition or is that a...
Page four, what was that?
We did mention it before, but is that a condition, I guess, that needs to be listed under a condition or is that just...
No, it's as presented.
It's just not going to be.
It's not on the site plan. It's not part of the application. It's here as being listed as not part of... So if they wanted to do it, it would be quote a change and then they would have to come back. It's not like they presented it and we're moving it as a condition. So I don't think it needs to be relisted.
Does it say open pavilion to...
Any modifications to the open pavilion on seven? You could add open before the word pavilion, the open-sided pavilion. How's that?
Sure. Again, I don't... It's more of a question if it needs to be in there or not.
The conditions should be things of action that happen and the actual structure or use or what we're reviewing should be on the plan and in the application. We're using the plan and the application as submitted material. We're using the conditions for events that might cause change or happen so that it can be relooked at or something doesn't change in the process and what we think we approved is somehow modified without our knowing about it. All right, so there's a revised... Is it an as-built site plan? Is there a title on that drawing?
Revised as-built plan.
Okay, it's called an as-built site plan? That's fine.
As-built site plan.
September 17th. When you say pictures, would you quantify that? It's with like parentheses, three or something so that it's known what's being submitted?
Sure. Keep the shade study pictures out? Keep the shade study pictures out?
No, shade study pictures, fine. Shade study pictures, findings, parentheses, four pages.
Okay, yeah.
Something like that. So people aren't... There's one page, it's four page, that's it. And then there's a revised colored photographs and specification plan set for the 40 by 40 Kingston frame timber pavilion.
I don't know if that was necessary.
All right, are there any other edits?
Just good.
Jack, Colin, Mario. Is there a motion to approve the decision as amended and edited here tonight?
I propose a motion to approve the draft as amended and...
I'm not seconding because I'm not a voting member. I think we... I think Marty had to agree to that one.
Yeah, a second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll close the public hearing. And you have a approved decision as amended and discussed for you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good luck dealing with the planning board. Very much.
I'll make the changes early next week. I'll get signatures and then I'll let you know when it's stamped in with a town clerk stamp. And then I'll mail out notices to a butters that it was approved and then that starts the scamping with the town clerk stamp starts the 28th opening. And then I'll let you know when you can come pick it up. And then I'll let you know when you can come pick it up and report it without anything.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening. Thank you very much. All right. All right, so if we just go over, Chrissy, what's on coming up?
Okay, so one other thing. So the reason why Martha and I were discussing the length of the term of the, the special permit to act on is because George Seem is called about five Cinder Avenue. Now because of, uh, unforeseen circumstances, they didn't act in time upon the special permit and the year had lapsed. So they were concerned that they couldn't move forward with exactly what was approved in twenty twenty two. So this is their decision that was signed on May fifth, twenty twenty two. So I thought if we just crossed out one year and put two years and had yourself, Mario, and Jack initial it, we could have George re-record it and then that would give him the opportunity to move forward without we submitting to the board all, all over again.
Did he pull the building permit?
Yes.
When did he pull the building permit?
Before, pulled building permit first, Peter denies the building permit and then he creates the building, the denial letter for the applicant to go to zoning. But the permit was never paid for, so he never moved forward with the permit. Now, the building permit can stay in the system indefinitely.
And he didn't act on it?
He didn't act on it. Didn't act on it within that year. Uh, he's mentioned COVID, they were sick and the weather.
The decision does stay a year.
But that's why Martha and I had this discussion and she said she's talked to Lisa about this too, that in planning board special permits there for two years for conservation commission order visit conditions, those are for three years. So she said it should be changed in the decisions moving forward to reflect two years.
So my opinion, short of a written letter from town council, would be that they should come before us on the hearing.
For a general discussion?
For reapplication.
Oh.
We can, we can say that, understanding their hardship, we can waive the fee this time.
Well, what about the legal ads? So those are over five hundred dollars now because you have to owes two. So we're trying to avoid the fees and just keep it as an administrative discussion, if at all possible.
If, if Peter wants to make an administrative decision. He can do that.
Okay.
If someone wants to challenge that decision, it would come before us. If Peter makes the decision and he gets town council to advise him, then we're gonna be fine because it's not in our hands.
Okay.
If we wrote a decision and somebody's asking us about our decision, we have it in black and white and we have to do that. We can help them as much as possible, make it as painless as possible, but it still has to go through us in a, in a proper, we gotta open the meeting, we gotta see if anybody's here, people do have to be notified. And we can say, yes, we understand what you're doing. That's great. Thanks. Okay. There's a motion to be made. Thank you. Let's go. But we still have to do it as a formality. I don't think having it in black and white, we can change it. Town council and the building inspector can weigh in and they can find something that they can see or they, he can apply to a hardship to the building inspector, which I think he can accept. And then it, it can move forward. The decision isn't gonna be any different from us.
Yeah, different, okay.
So what you're saying is that going forward like we did tonight is different than going backwards, which actually makes sense.
Yes, and we should take notes. And next time we talk to town council, which we had started last year, you guys are, weren't all there because we weren't having meetings, but I was in a meeting, George was in the meeting, Martha was in the meeting, and, and Lisa was in the meeting. And we went through some sections and we went through some definitions and we read them and we commented and we discussed and we proposed changes. The planning board would then take up those changes. They would read them to themselves. They would debate, discuss, make a motion, approve. That then becomes, and it has happened previously every so often since I've been here for ten plus years, then it goes to annual town meeting or special town meeting, which it is a warrant at the town meeting. And they usually people are like, but they say, we have a zoning change, we are updating the language, we added the accessory apartment through the same process. I had some say in the draft and review of it that went to Lisa. Lisa incorporated some edits. It went to the planning board. I wasn't part of the planning board discussion. The planning board discussed it. They made the final draft. The draft went to the select board. Select board decided to put it on the, as a warrant on a special meeting. It went to town special meeting. It was read in public, people voted on it, it was approved. The accessory apartment came, became part. It was clear that there was a little bit of language that was a little fuzzy or wasn't quite understood, and so there were modifications that the planning board made to that, those sections. And then, again, that went to the select board, it went to town meeting, it was approved and it was modified. So when you read the bylaws and you see all the little dates at the bottom, those are the times that it was accepted at town meeting for modifications. We can propose all we want, we can advocate for changes. We are not in the plan, the planning board has to make the official draft, has to debate the official draft, has to approve the official draft. They're the ones that submitted to the select board. We could show up to the select board when they're bringing it up for discussion and say, I'm on the zoning board of appeals and I highly advocate for this and I actually originated this. And they'll say, thank you. Jack, we appreciate your commentary. And then they'll do what they're gonna do. So if, if going forward and we think something is of a condition that is warranted because of a situation that is a condition of the finding, which I think we have the purview to do with, within reason. But going backwards, we can't go backwards. All right, so can you just read off what you have in the package that's in your, did you pick up your package from downstairs?
I picked up the package.
Jack?
I will get it on the way up. I did not pick it up. I did read the electronic one. There was a accessory apartment one, an alarm box.
Okay, so eighty northern boulevard.
Yes.
There was a decision.
So the Butters to eighty northern boulevard filed, uh, uh, an appeal.
So they appealed it, okay.
Against.
Yeah, it's an appeal. That's it. So we have an appeal to?
Peter's enforcement of their request. They don't feel it was strong enough.
Right, Peter made an enforcement, they're challenging the enforcement.
Yep, he did his site inspection.
Peter's administrative actions comes before us if someone challenges it. Okay.
And then, so Martha mentioned that, uh, Lisa's trying to get legal counsel to represent the town here at the meeting and Peter's gonna be here too.
Okay, if, if you read through this and you have any questions, you three can contact Lisa directly. We can't have a group email. You can't write an email to all three of us saying, hey, guys, I'm thinking that this isn't quite right. I'd like to, I think of it this way and copy Lisa and ask her to answer your question. You can send her the question directly. When she gives back an answer, she copies Martha. Martha then can disseminate information from Lisa to all, all of us because that's not a discussion, that is information that is coming to us, town council.
Just point of clarification, didn't we say last time that we were supposed to submit on the Martha and have her submit it? You said, it doesn't matter?
Yeah, it's probably quicker to keep Martha in the loop.
Okay.
But I.
I'm not saying you have any questions that were ready yet, but.
I email Lisa for certain things. I've called Lisa and, and had discussions after emails to try to clarify stuff. If, if it's, um, if that's the discussion between Lisa and I, I'm taking notes in my book. I'm not talking to you guys. I'm, if Lisa writes something, I can then ask Martha if she would take that and, and send that to you guys with, here's the statement from Lisa. If it's an email, it's back and forth between Lisa and I, it's not, she's not gonna take that and send that to you. If Lisa writes a full paragraph that says, um, I don't know, a Butters writes to adjoining properties and she writes a little dissertation, Martha can take that piece and send that to you. My conversation with Lisa is, is, is personal and my notes within my book are personal. They're not, they can't be asked for from the public. Chrissy's note taking, on the other hand, is part of the public record and if somebody asked about the meeting and wanted notes, they could request Chrissy's notes, whether they're typed or handwritten, whether they're approved or not. She is taking the public record. The public has the right to do that because we're all directing her on what to, to write and are part of that. So if you have private notes or something like that, you certainly can use them in the discussion, but they're not part of the record. And that, that has been discussed with, uh, Lisa before and, and gone through and clarified.
Question, who makes the decision on the appeal next week, or this meeting? Like, do we decide?
Yes, if, if, if Peter makes a decision and somebody doesn't agree with what Peter's doing, it then gets kicked out to us. And then we, we hear. Peter has to say, yeah, I, I told them they could do that. And then someone says, well, on order, I don't think they can do that. And it's an administrative appeal. We hear. If, yeah, if Peter does something and somebody doesn't like it, then they have, they have to file an order to get to us. It's just like, if somebody has a building permit, they have to get it rejected before it gets to us. You just don't come to us.
Yeah.
It has to go through a process.
I was just reading it and it said Peter recommended a firewall or something, a fire door, and everyone saying, no, we want the utilities taken out.
Peter made a decision. It's, it's right in here. If someone's challenging what Peter's decision was, and we'll hear both sides and we'll figure it out.
Then they have the right to appeal, I recall.
Then it goes to the land court.
Correct, we go to court, right?
The town council takes over from there and town council. Town council is representing Peter against the person who's appealing this. If, if this then goes to land court, if we make a decision and it goes to court, then, then town council will represent our decision against whoever is reappealing it at that point. And I don't know, I've, I've been, there's been five or six in ten years that have gone to
The gasoline station.
And, and nothing more than a, maybe a comment from me, but there's, no one's been ever been asked, or I've never been asked to go or it's free cut and drive for what we say and what town council was representing. We, we, in our motions are fairly clear in what we're saying and then town council can represent it. It's not like we go to court and have to reargue the whole thing of what we decided. Does that make sense?
Yes, clear.
Three River Road and Byfield is an accessory detached apartment.
Simple one like the others that we received?
Forty Parker Street is just.
No. Eight through ten Fordham? I don't know anything about forty Parker. I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, he lives on forty Parker Street. Sorry.
Okay, okay. That's okay. I was like, what's wrong with that?
Sorry, sorry. You know where Fordham Street is?
Eight through ten Fordham, now.
It's southern Plum Island. It's the last before the Refuge.
Peter's had the site plan set for about three months. He's been reviewing it, getting, you know, more information from the applicant, but then just realized it's so huge and because of the increase in, um,
Height.
height, it has to come through zoning. So after some discussion, they failed to get the application in. So that's why Peter's gonna be here for eighty northern and eight through ten Fordham because he feels bad that they had to wait a little longer for the approval. And it's already been approved by conservation, uh, so.
All right, let's get on board.
Oh, um, one more administrative. I still need signatures for bittersweet.
Oh, yeah.
From Mario and Eric. And I talked to Martha. So we did get approval for signature stamps. I have one from Mario, so I can get signature stamps for the other three of you. And then as long as you email me approval to use it for the signage of a decision, Martha believes legal counsel will be okay with that.
Each time we want you to use it, we have to give you.
Yes, individually, single approval, yes. So I can, um.
Did you need to? Yeah, so you just mean a digital copy of my signature, is that what you mean?
Actually, yes, that's all I need. And like I said, we emailed you the decision and then you could sign it and then scan it in and email it back, but I don't know if you have that scanning capability. If you did, that would be ideal.
I can just do a, um, like you can just do a signature on the computer and add it as a PDF.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need that.
So you don't even have to scan it again, right?
That would be cool because then I wouldn't have to pay the money for the signature stamp.
Yeah.
And I already have one for Lange and Mario, so.
I have, I have a PDF that I use.
Okay, excellent. If you could forward that to me, that would be great. I will obtain your approvals, uh, signatures for that. That's great. I'll get this stamped in on Monday and get the ones out to the Butters. I will need to close the hearing.
Yep.
All right, can you have a motion?
Close the hearing. Do you close the hearing?
I will second that since I'm here.
All righty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.